Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence for all town officials, town employees, and town honorees that we've lost since last time we met. Nancy Morrison, former town clerk, and Thomas Green, former highway superintendent. Thank you. It is currently 6:05, and I call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask the town clerk to read the warrant.
To either constable of West Bridgewater in the county of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed and notified to warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the West Bridgewater High School in said town on June 29, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., and then in there to act on the following articles to wit. Pursuant to within the article, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the time and place within mentioned by posting fifteen attest copies of within warrant at various locations throughout precincts one and two, seven days at least before the time of the holding of the aforementioned annual town meeting. Bruce L. Holmquist, Constable of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the articles. Articles one and two are consent articles. Selectman Anderson?
Move that the town consider and approve Articles one and two as printed on the warrant as a single consent article.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Finance Committee? Board of Selectmen? Thank you. Selectman Anderson, would you like to speak to the motion? Nope. Hearing none. Is there any discussion on the motion? Thank you. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Article three. Selectman Anderson?
I think that's mine.
Oh. I don't know why it says... Okay. Selectman Reyes?
That the town vote to determine salaries of the following elected town officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Moderator, $338. Board of Assessors, $10,539. Board of Selectmen, $10,375. Water Commissioners, $7,295. Town Clerk, $73,614. Board of Health, $4,936. The following officers to serve without pay, library trustees, planning board, school committee, and tree warden.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously six to zero to recommend.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. It was actually two to zero because I recused myself from all library matters because of a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I said it was recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, two to zero, because I recused myself due to a conflict of interest with the library matters.
Thank you. Selectman Reyes, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions?
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, so... Right. Article four is your town budget. It's in the Finance Committee book that everyone has. What we'll do is I'll read through the budget, each department or category... Oh, sorry. I'll read through the budget, each department or category, and the total. If you have any questions or comments or would like to make, just yell out "hold." And once we've gone through all of them, we will go back and visit each "hold." First, we'll have Meredith Anderson... Oh, sorry. We'll have Janice Fox read the motion. Sorry.
Can you guys hear me okay? Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $36,366,369 for the maintenance and support of the several departments for the town and other usual or necessary town charges as herein specified and requested by the Finance Committee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, for the purposes herein described, and further that the sum of $33,027,330 be raised and appropriated, and the sum of $3,339,39 be transferred as follows. From estimated water revenues, $2,141,766. From emergency medical service receipts, $400,000. From free cash to offset debt exclusion borrowing costs for the new middle high school, $350,000. From free cash to augment budget, $447,273. Totalling $3,339,39.
Thank you. So like I said, I'm going to read through the different line items, and from there, if you want to place a "hold..." Second. Oh, sorry. We need a second on that? Thank you. So, like I was saying, I'm going to go down each line item, each department, and if you want to put a "hold" on it that we can talk about when we're done going through them all, just yell out "hold," and I'll put a star next to it, and we'll touch on it. Starting with moderator, it's 1140 for $588. Board of Selectmen, 1220 at... Okay. FinCom, 1310, it's at $3,100. FinCom Reserve, 1320 at $67,000. Accountant, 1350, at $111,754. Assessors, 1410, at $238,677. Treasurer/Collector, 1450, it's at $319,513. Town Council, 1510, it's at $87,000. Information Systems, 1550, it's at $92,920. Cable TV Committee, 1560, it's at $1,100. Town Clerk, 1610, it's at $136,519. Elections Registration, it's 1630, and that is a cost of $35,500. Conservation Commission, it is 1710, at a cost of $108,894. Open Space Committee, 1715, it's at $950. Agricultural Commission, 1720, it's at $600. Planning Board, 1750, it's at $26,119. Board of Appeals, 1760, it's at $5,901. Rent Control Board, it's 1850, and it's at $4,399. ADA Commission, 1920, it's at $500. Insurances, 1930, it's at $270,866. Town Hall, 1940, it's at $66,625. Municipal Building Needs Committee, 1945, it's at $1,486. Waste Water Treatment Facilities, 1950, it's at $14,800. Police Department, 2100, and it's at $3,027,109. Fire Department, 2200, it's at $2,377,491. Building Inspector, 2410, it's at $172,297. Gas and Plumbing Inspector, 2420, it's at $20,515. The Sealer of Weights and Measures, that's 2440, and that's at $6,075. The Inspector of Wires, that's 2450, that's at $20,715. K-9 Control, 2920, it's at $8,250. Education, it's $3,000, and it's at $13,766,45. Southeastern Regional Vo-Tec, 3200, and it's at $549,335. Public Works, 4215, it's at $1,149,027. Public Works Snow Removal, 4230, it's at $91,300. Public Works Street Lighting, 4240, it's at $85,700. Waste Disposal, that's 4330, and that's at $321,988. Tree Warden, 4940, that's at $400. Board of Health, 5110, that's $167,923. Women's Crisis Center, 5260, that's at $2,750. Brockton Area Arc, that's 5270, at $250. Old Colony Hospice, that's 5280, at $2,000. Council on Aging, 5410, at $313,335. Veterans, 5430, at $65,893. Library, it's 6100, and it's $479,146. Plymouth County Extension Service, it is 6600, at $200. Historic Commission, 6910, and it's at $1,750. Veterans Memorial Day, that is 6920, at $1,700. Debt Principal, 7100, at $1,926,509. Debt Interest, 7510, at $1,060,176. Interest on Short-Term Debt, that's 7520, at $50,000. Benefits, 9100, at $6,606,185. And the Water Department, 4500, at $2,141,766. Bringing you at a grand total of $36,366,369. So, just to recap, we have holds on... Board of Selectmen, the FinCom Reserve, insurances, and Waste Disposal. And that appears to be it. You may come up to the microphone now, and...
Stone Lane. I'd like to speak to Board of Assessors, line 5112. That shows the amount of... I'm sorry. I'm out of order. I apologize. Actually, before I started, I just wanted to ask a question to the Finance Committee as we go over the annual town budget, and that is, how much debt is the town of West Bridgewater in?
I think your question was to the Finance Committee?
She wants to know how much debt the town is in.
Well, if you're not sure, I actually have some numbers here.
Well, I mean, we have loans on the school and a few other things. I'm not sure what specifically you want to know.
So, the town of West Bridgewater, I got this printed up when... around March, and the town debt bonded. So the town debt bonded is a total of $6,368,000. The town debt for the school, which is also bonded, is $25,920. The Water Department, $1,373,000. I'm going to round it up now. Round it. The W-P-A-T, which is your subject in waste, is bonded, is $34,474,000.
That's not true.
That's the numbers that was given to me by the Finance?
The $34 million is the total town bonded debt.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the total. Okay. So that's in bonded amounts. We have 35... 34.45 million dollars in debt. On our bands, which was explained to me, was a short-term pay yearly loans. So, for pumping traffic signals in the playground, we... 68... no, excuse me. $608,000. Hundred thousand dollars. For short-term borrowing for water, it's at $1,689,000. For the Howard School, we are at $1.3 million. That's a total of $3.6 million.
I'm going to interrupt you right there. What does this have to do with the holds?
Well, I just have a number of holds, so I just want to know why. Okay. So, of the Board of Assessors, we have line 52... excuse me. 5112. Appointed official. In 2019, the...
I'm going to interrupt you right there. You did not place a "hold" on the assessors' budget?
I'm sorry. Selectmen. Let me just take a deep breath, please. Okay. On the Board of Selectmen, line 5112, appointed officials. In 2019, the salary was $105,000. In 2020, the salary was $123,814. That's an $18,000 increase in salary over the course of a year. This year, they're requesting an additional $9,000. So, I would like to amend that line... To read...
You're going to need to fill out the amendment form.
That's fine. I will fill that one out. I did the other ones. This is the only one I didn't do. To read 100... $32,263. Because I don't know about you guys, but who got 18% raise... or 15, 15% raise in the year 2020 or 2019?
I'm sorry. The line is already at 132,263. What did you want to amend it to?
I'm sorry. 123,814. I'm sorry.
Hi. Can I speak to this, Jason?
Yep.
Yes, you may.
So, first of all, as far as the balance sheet's concerned on the town and what our liabilities are, that's pretty much an open book. Everyone should have access to that. But what we've moved towards, and I think everyone has seen over the past few years, is we've moved further away from debt and more into paying cash. That's your money, and none of that's been spent without your vote. So as far as... And I'm actually a believer in having a little bit of debt, because sometimes you're better off financing through debt than paying cash. Maybe you can keep that cash in the bank and earn a little more interest, or maybe the interest rates on debt financing are more appealing. So, as far as the amount of debt we have, it's not a scary number. I think it's actually gotten better over the past few years, the amount of debt. So we're making significant payments. We're also using... You don't see the school financing on your tax bill. That's being paid out of, and I hate this term, but I will say it, free cash. But it's being paid out of those money. Again, it's your money. It's coming from you, but you're not seeing on your tax bill its additional debt payment. As far as the elected official, line 511... I'm sorry. Which line was addressed? 5112?
5112.
Okay. I'm not sure what... It says 132,263. What did you want to change it to?
123,814.
Okay. So that's the amount that was approved in 2020. So you're suggesting giving them zero?
Essentially. An 18% raise the year before seems like it's reasonable to not have another raise. 18% is a significant amount. The average rate of inflation last I knew was 4%.
Am I not adding right? That's not 18%.
This is also two people.
We can round it down to 15%.
So she's saying... So it's 6% from last year to this year? Go ahead. You take the...
No, no. So I think you're misunderstanding. In 2019 to 2020, it went from $105,000 to $123,000. That's approximately $18,000. I'll say 15% to kind of range it down.
So, we had a change in staff. So we had... We added a position or changed a position. So, we made the Assistant Town Administrator also the HR Director when she came onboard. So there was a change in responsibilities. This wasn't just an increase. This was a change to the office structure.
Okay. So then where was that deducted? If she had additional duties added, I would assume that she wouldn't be getting two full-time paychecks? I would be expecting that she would be getting...
It was... A higher-level position was created, so we paid the new person more than the previous person.
All right. I'm still going to submit this, and the town can vote.
So, if I may, I just also want to clarify. This is not one person. This is two people. So, that line encompasses both the Assistant Director and the HR Director as one person, along with the clerical person who follows the union contract. So, Selectman Kinnahan is entirely correct. Look, we have a $40 million budget. We have 252 employees. I challenge anyone to find a company that large that has no HR responsibilities, HR person, HR staff, HR director, HR anything. Up until that point, we all just caught it as we could. We hired somebody with 15 years of experience from another town that could come in and do the job, and it cost us a couple of thousand dollars more to bring her up to the next level, and then also the other employee received the union increase. So the previous year, that's what they received. Now, it's a smaller increase this year because the responsibilities changed a year earlier. That's why the large increase last year and the small increase this year.
Neil Colley, 376 Walnut Street. All she's trying to say is you don't want to increase these budgets from last year, from what I understand. And this is the problem. We never merged the Town Administrator with the Selectman. That's a whole separate entity. You did the Selectments, then you did the Town Administrator. Just go back a couple of years. You just started to merge it, so it's a little confusing. The Town Administrator, she's talking about the raise you got. I think it's 511, appointed official. I assume that's Dave Gagnon. Am I right by saying that? All right. Now, 5112 are the two secretaries. We hired one. I remember she's a military woman, and she got that, and you brought one from another town. I believe in equal pay for equal work. I don't know the difference, what they're doing. But I think the one we had first could be just as knowledgeable as the one we took from another town. But going back to Dave Gagnon, all she's saying is, and I say this with respect, not disrespect, she's trying to make her not understand what she's trying to say. She just can't get the message out. Instead of going from $144,000, bringing it up to $149,910, she don't want to do that. She wants to keep the salaries at the same as last year before the raises. And if she does do it, she has to re-figure the balance of the town budget.
So, let me understand. So we have one employee who is union, and we raised the salary of that person? Yes?
She follows the union contract, yes.
Okay. And the person that you hired from another town, how much more does she get paid? In comparison to the other person who does the same job? Okay. You know what?
They aren't the same job.
I'm going to withdraw this one because I'm confused, and I don't feel like dragging this out for everybody else, so...
Okay. So we're going to move on to the FinCom... Oh, yeah, the FinCom Reserve Hold?
Yes. That's me, too. So, I looked at the annual town report. The Finance Committee, when I looked at the town report for fiscal year, the ending in fiscal year December 31, 2020, the amount that was spent was $20,000. The ending balance was $47,000. Is it my understanding that that ending balance is what was not spent? Okay. So therefore, I would like to amend line 5780 from $67,000 to $20,000 to reflect the amount that was spent the previous year and left open.
So, just so you know, that money is put aside for unexpected things that come up in budgets and things that have to be paid for, and if it's not spent, it doesn't get spent. But if somebody comes to the town, and if one of the department heads comes and they have an expense that was unexpected, we won't have any money to fund it if we cut that. and they have an expense that was unexpected, we won't have any money to fund it if we cut that. So, just so you understand what that money's for.
So, if there's an expense of $47,000, can you give me an example of what that might be?
So, I, I don't have my notes with me, what we spent it on last year. David, do you recall?
Okay, is she still talking now? So, in, in the instance, you had a pipe break at Town Hall, and you're, you're waiting for the insurance money, but in the meantime, you need to get that fixed. And you don't have the money in your budget. This is where that money's going to come from. So, it's those, those events that are emergency in nature. You can't wait to call a town meeting to spend the money. So, that's the purpose of having it allocated there. While they may have only spent $20,000 in the prior year, we can't really predict what's going to happen the next year.
Okay, so then I would like to amend the amount to read $40,000. And the reason for this is that we have so many things, articles that we want to vote on in the articles, say to acqui, uh, how does it say? To transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money. So, if we don't tie money up, or as much money up in other things, then perhaps we don't have to borrow, and we can pay.
Can you please write that down, present this to us?
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to it?
Yes.
So, this is one of the budgets that we should all be extremely excited when we don't spend money. Because what this is, is something unforeseen during the year did not happen. Our department heads did an excellent job of budgeting, and this town meeting did an excellent job of voting on the previous year's budget. Quite frankly, this is the most variable account that we have. We have spent all of this money in years past, and sometimes we don't spend a lot of that like we did this past year. I will tell you, we are about to go to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee to transfer money in July, like we do every year, for end-of-year expenses. And this year, we're going to be looking to transfer about $30,000 out of that account just for our increase in solid waste. If anybody is paying attention, is that we all know that solid waste refuse costs are skyrocketing. Recycling costs are going down, which mean, the ability to be a recycler is going down, which means our costs are going up. So, we don't have enough money in that budget this year, so we have to do a transfer. That's unforeseen. We could not have known that a year ago. In addition to that, we are going to be making some additional transfers because we all know that every single organization has incurred costs due to COVID-19. Police and fire need PPE. Just the cost to set this up, we had to pay people to come in and move this. We had to rent these TVs. None of that was in the budget last year. But we have to have a town meeting, and we literally earnestly do our best to do it in the most transparent way. But that costs money. And because it can't be in a budget, we have to set up a reserve account so we can transfer money and be nimble during the course of the year. Or imagine if I need $8,000 to buy something, and I have to call this every single time. That's why this account is here. So, it's fantastic that we did not spend a lot last year. Hopefully, in the future, we won't need to. This year is different. I think I explained why some of this, we all know, every company is dealing with increased costs. So, we need that money this year. Hopefully, next year, we don't need it, but it needs to be there just in case. And the last thing about the debt. We have not incurred debt as a general rule over the last more than handful of years. Out of that $30 million, three-quarters of it is your new school. That was a one-time debt expense that the town overwhelmingly supported. We're not incurring debt for everyday expenses. So, I think overall, the town has done a really good job. If I said to you, excluding the school, we only have $3 million worth of debt, you'd be pretty excited. So, one day, the school would get paid off. That's the only reason the debt exists there. So, I would ask you, the Finance Committee is extremely conservative. There is nobody here who's going to say otherwise. We don't spend a lot of money, and we certainly don't spend it without giving it considerable thought. They need this just in case, so during the year, we can make an emergency transfer.
So, again, I would like to amend the Board of Assessors' line 5780 that shows the amount of $67,000 to $40,000. Over the last two years, the two years, you've spent $20,000. So, tying up, and I was going to put it back to the $20,000 we've been spending every year since, but if, I would like to see $20,000 saved, there's things that the town wants to buy and purchase. And, so, I would like to amend that?
Thank you.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Wait, can I just, one more thing? I just want to say something. Because you brought up the fact that town waste disposal, you said that was going to be a higher expense. This is one thing I have a hold on, and that is because on line 5291, the amount of $169,000 was given to the waste disposal when they only requested $149,000.
We will get to that when we get to the waste disposal line.
He brought it up, so I'm just arguing to that fact.
Is there a second on the amendment? Any more discussion on it? Hearing none for the amendment? There was, she, she seconded. Yep. So, hearing no other discussion on the amendment, all those in favor of it? Opposed? The noes have it. Hearing no other discussion on FinCom Reserve, we're going to move on to the insurances. Any discussion on that?
Yes. Insurances, line number 1930. I would like to amend insurances that shows the amount of $270,086 to $170,800. To the amount of $200,866. This, actually, when I looked at the town budget, again, from December 31st of 2020, showed that there was an excess of $100,000 left in the account. This would allow for a $30,000 increase of insurances, should we need them. I mean, I would think that our insurance policies are there, and we know the amount, and we pay them. If there's, I don't think, we, to anticipate $100,000 or $100,000 to sit in an account, I'm not sure what the just-in-case is with insurance, but $100,000 seems like a lot of money to me. That would allot for $70,000 to be in free cash, which I'm pretty sure somebody's asking for, for something else in another article. So, I would like to submit that amendment.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to it?
Yes, you may.
So, as part of my responsibilities as Town Administrator, I'm also the Insurance Administrator, so I handle all insurance for the town. So, Denise's entirely accurate is that at least at this point, we do have a surplus in that account. Now, we have a surplus because the town, the budget hasn't finished yet. We still have one more payment. So, there'll be a reconciliation of payment that will come out in July. It's usually not that much. It could be as low as $6,000. It could sometimes be as high as $12,000 to $14,000. It's variable because what they do is they take a look at our payroll through the course of the year, and they have to make what they call a modification to it, and then they'll, they'll do what they have to do. The rest of it, I always keep a surplus in that line because we have very high deductibles. I insure the entire town for but $100 million. And I do that because most of our buildings is like a college campus. So, for example, we're in this building right now, but literally a stone's throw away from here is public safety, the Spring Street School, then the library, then Howard Street and the Town Hall. One small tornado, for example, that touches down can wipe out 200 yards, easy. So, we have to follow what our insurance adjuster is informing us, and obviously, I spent a considerable amount of time looking at this. So, for $100 million, it costs us like $200,000. And the reason we get it as cheap as we do is because I have high deductibles. So, we don't expect to have to use the insurance a lot. But I have some insurance deductibles as high as $20,000 and $25,000. So, if all of a sudden there was a major catastrophe in this building, and it's a $25,000 deductible, but the insurance covers $4 million, this is where I get the $25,000. So, I have to make sure that it's there in case I have a couple of deductibles that get paid out. Quite frankly, I thought I did a pretty good job this year because the insurance went up considerably amount last year. And I shopped around, we changed vendors, and it only went up 2%, which, in today's day and age, that's not a big increase for insurance. So, I fully, you are entirely correct that there is a balance there, but it's not by accident. It's there to best protect the town. Because again, after we set the tax rate in November, meaning that we can't change what the taxes are, if all of a sudden we had a major catastrophe and I needed $100,000, not only do I have to call a town meeting, you don't have the money. I can't even tax you at that point. So, I have to set a reserve there, and I will tell you, if you speak to any insurance expert, they always set reserves on insurance for these very reasons.
So, thank you for informing me. I'm better, more knowledgeable now, and I will not submit an amendment on that. Thank you. Sometimes I just like to know where the money goes.
Hearing no more discussion on insurances, we're going to move on to waste disposal. Any discussion?
So, that's one of the ones that I will probably do. So, in the town budget, the Waste Disposal Department on line 5291 requested the amount of $149,000. The amount approved by the committee was $169,000. So, I, you have to question why the town would approve an amount $20,000 more than what the people who actually run the department would request?
So, the reason being is because of the way our budget schedule works. So, our budget schedule works is, is that all departments are required to turn in their budgets by January 31st. But then the world changed. Two things happened. One is, is that we saw one landfill close, and we saw solid waste costs skyrocket. And the vendor that we use has now stated that they've put a force majeure clause in, which is going to require us to have to spend more money per ton. I shopped around, I contacted other municipalities, and I looked at other vendors. We weren't going to get any relief in pricing. Because they exercised a force majeure clause, I had the legal ability to be able to cancel the contract and worked on it with Town Council at that time. The issue is I couldn't get it cheaper anywhere else. So, we would have still come in about $149,000. The second issue then is, is again, COVID-19 happened. Most of you have been home. And you know what they've done? Is a lot of people have cleaned out their houses. Our solid waste tonnage has skyrocketed over the last two months. There's got to be a direct correlation to that. So, between an increase in the rate and an increase in usage, we've had to ask for more money this year. My hope is, is that it may return back to normal a year from now, and we can level fund this, if not even maybe go a little bit lower. But I've always said this, is that the last thing I can do is look at any of you in May and say, you cannot throw your trash away for two months because our budget recycles on July 1st. So, if we ran out of money there, we would literally close the transfer station down. And for obvious reasons, we can't do that. So, we had to budget the additional monies.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the hold? Hearing none, we're going to vote on the town budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
Article 5, Steve McCarthy?
Article 5, moved at the, put my glasses on there, well. Moved at the town accepting provisions of Section 4, Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, and to further accept the provisions of Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, which will grant a percentage increase to real estate tax exemptions to persons who are otherwise qualified for such exemptions. And to, and further to increase the real estate tax exemption to persons who are qualified by 25% for fiscal year 21.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend this.
Board of Selectmen?
It was voted unanimous by the Board of Selectmen, 3 to 0.
Mr. McCarthy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. What this does, it allows the local communities to adopt a 25% increase to the following exemptions, elderly, which would go from 500 to 6 and 1/4, widows older 70, 175 to 218, 75, veterans, 400 to 500, and blind, 500 to 6 and 1/4. So, it allows the, the communities to, you know, increase those exemptions over the state statute by 25%.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 6, Mr. Antelli?
Chris Antelli, 268 South Elm. That the town borrowed $323,058 to be repaid in not more than one year in anticipation of reimbursement to meet the town's share of the cost of work for state aid construction and maintenance as authorized as the town's apportionment of Chapter 90 local transportation aid funding for fiscal year 2021 in accordance with the figures released by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in accordance with Chapter 86 of the Acts of 2008.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is our annual Chapter 90 music, uh, music. Money that we receive from the state for repair and maintenance of our roads.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 7, Ms. Cambria?
Move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee, administrative expenses, open space, historic resources, and community housing reserves, and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, with each item to be a separate appropriation or reserve appropriations. From FY 2021, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $10,750. From FY 2021, estimated revenues for open space reserve is $0. From FY 2021, estimated revenues for historic resource reserves, $4,000. From FY 2021, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $21,500. From FY 2021, estimated revenues for undesigned funds is $0.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted unanimously, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the mo- Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. The community preservation fund, or the act, requires that any money that comes in from either the taxes that the residents pay, or that's distributed by the state to the town, 10% of the money that's brought in has to go to a specific, we call them buckets. And this is what this motion speaks to. Can you hear me better? Did everybody hear that explanation? I'm all set.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article eight, Ms. Cambria?
Move that the town vote to transfer $4,641 to community housing reserve and $4,641 to open space reserve from CPA unreserved fund balance to meet the 10% state requirement.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Finance committee voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. The state voted a supplemental budget, giving all towns a second allotment after already voting on our 10% at the last town meeting. We had to have this article to adjust the 10% so that it met that 10%. And it's required by the DOR and the coalition.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article nine, Ms. Cambria?
Move that the town vote to appropriate $68,742 from FY 21 Community Preservation Fund estimated budget revenue to fund the debt service for the open space project of the new playground at Friendship Park.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance committee?
Finance committee voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Thanks. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. This is the first payment to, I think everybody may remember, last year there was an article approved by the residents to build a new park at Friendship Park. And this is one of the first payments for that. And I know that that project is ongoing, and it's, I believe it's in the beginning stages of, I know, of being constructed.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, yes. Neil Connolly, 376 Wald Street, West Bridgewater, of course. How much is in that fund for the preservation? How much do we have in there?
The total? Let me get my paper.
Well, do we have enough to fund this? Because, just for a point of information, at the last town meeting, we approved for this park, and the money was there. So I really don't know what this argument is with, so I assumed all the money was there, we're going to start it. It didn't start, but now it's starting. They just tore it down. But do we have, if I'm in order, Mr. Chairman, do we have enough money to fund that playground? To tear it down, put it all back together, and turn it over, whoever maintains it, the school?
I don't, I don't believe we had the full amount. It would have used up everything that we had.
That's my point. Thank you.
Yep. So right now, if you can, we have about $26,000. One second. No, sorry. In the unreserved balance right now, we have about $175,000. Open space has about $26,000. Historic only has about 34 cents. That's been a busy, there's been a lot of historic projects. And then housing has $137,440. Projected for this year, we should take in about another 180 to 185,000.
I know, if you had done, I know I've gone to a couple of those meetings, but we haven't had them because of the virus. I could have asked them there. But another question, how much is that playground going to cost the town from now till it's finished and turned over?
Well, it would only be what it was, what it was approved for. You can't, once you approve the project with the CPA, you can only use that amount of money.
All right. And how much is that? Do you know off the top of your head?
Hold on one second.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize.
320,000.
Yeah, 320,000 dollars.
How much?
320,000.
And now, and I know we're going to go to volunteer to put it together.
I believe that's correct. Yes, it would be a volunteer group.
Well, maybe you can.
Yes, community build.
Are we going to now, I heard now, we're going to just hire the company to come out and do that. Is that false, or is that true?
It's still scheduled to be a community build.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 10, Ms. Cambria?
Move that the town vote to appropriate from the FY 2021 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, a sum of which up to $17,500, under the category of historical preservation to be expended by the conservation agent for the historic preservation and nomination of the Skim Milk Bridge.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance committee?
Finance committee voted to recommend unanimously, six to zero.
Board of selectmen? Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yep. So the $17,500 was requested to, the first, the first task was to prepare the paperwork to get the Skim Milk Bridge on the National Register of Historic Places. The second was to do an assessment of the bridge. It would not necessarily address preservation, but just kind of assess the structural, any needs that, that possibly could come up in the future. But, but it's not any, it's just a kind of an engineering report on the bridge.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
So I'm just curious, where it says, transfer available funds or borrow the sum. Obviously, if we only have 34 cents in the historical preservation fund, we don't have 17,500. Where do we anticipate getting the money?
That would come from the general fund.
Okay. So can we, rather than, say, borrow the sum, can we take that out of there? Because if we're just going to be transferring funds from one preservate, you know, to another.
Moderator, I'm not sure if you can change the wording of that. I'm not.
Yeah. Are you trying to change the wording of?
Yeah, just to take the word borrow out. Because I don't, I mean, if we have the funds, and we're going to get it from somewhere, if we could just take the word borrow out.
Cheryl, don't, you're reading the article. Please read the motion. The motion is that the town vote to appropriate.
Yep. I thought that, that's what I read. I think, I don't, I read that. I think you were looking at the actual article. My, what I read was this, move, move that the town vote to appropriate from the FY 2021 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, a sum of which up to $17,500, under the category of historical preservation, to be expended by the conservation agent for the historic preservation and nomination of the Skim Milk Bridge.
Okay, I understand.
Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 11, Mr. Golda.
Move that the town transfer from free cash $50,000 to fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB liability trust fund, establishing accordance with chapter 32b, section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance committee?
Finance committee voted unanimously to recommend, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the annual transfer into our OPEB fund, which is going to fund retiree healthcare in the future. The credit ratings agencies look very favorably upon funding this every year.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 12, Chief Flaherty?
Move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $10,000 as a town's match for the Webb Task Force in fiscal 2021.
Is there a second? To speak to the most, oh, sorry. Finance committee?
Finance committee voted six to zero to unanimously recommend.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
We've been part of this task force since 1997. It started out with the three Bridgewater's. Right now, we have five departments that are part of it. And what we do, we collaborate together and share resources. So at any time, we could have a team, 10 and 12 detectives if we need be. We do a lot of drug, drug investigations for all the communities. So basically, it's sharing resources.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 13, Mr. Antelli.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $45,920 to be expended by the Department of Public Works to purchase mobile lifts.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously by the finance committee, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. We have an annual inspection every year of our heavy-duty lifts. They are currently 22 years old. This passed January, they did not pass. And we were given an estimate of around 12 grand to repair them. Those would be minimum repairs. And there is a lot more to that coming up in the next couple of years. So where this is a set of lifts that put fire engines and 10-wheelers up on the lift's far, the mechanic to work on, we felt that it was time to replace them.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 14, Mr. Antelli.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $150,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the construction and engineering of sidewalks.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously by the finance committee, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is our third year that the town has voted a warranty article for sidewalk construction in the town. We have begun new sidewalks on Howard Street, and we'll continue on that process. We also are working on a grant to help match some of that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
Up top, no.
Maurice McCarthy, 23, Captain Carlson Way. I thought, Chris, if it's possible to tell us how much $150,000 will give us in terms of sidewalk. I was always curious myself as to how much sidewalks even cost.
Sidewalks are very expensive. We guesstimate with a curb, grant a curb, approximately $100 a foot. So it doesn't go too far. However, our hope is to, where we've gone down Howard Street, we're going to hopefully go down River Street, and then we'll have a complete loop of sidewalks for people to walk.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 15, Mr. Antelli.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $300,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purpose of installing a traffic signal in sidewalks at the corner of Howard Street and West Center Street.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended by the finance committee, six to zero unanimously.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
So this is a signal that we're going to put in, similar to the one that was just installed down at East and East Center Street. We have also received a grant from Mass Steel Chief for $287,000 to supplement this $300,000. That will, in fact, bring it up closer to a half a million.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 16, Mr. Antelli.
Move that the town vote to transfer a sum of $2,301 from the Commonwealth Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund to be expended for the construction and engineering of sidewalks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously by the finance committee, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
The Commonwealth Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund was set up about three years ago. Actually, it was, 2017. And these are for rides that originate from West Bridgewater, Uber or Lyft rides. We get a assessment of 20 cents for each ride that originates from the town. In 2017, we collected $780. We were awarded $1,521 in 2018, for a total of $2,301. That's what we're looking at with this warranty article. That money will be put into the sidewalk trust fund, or the sidewalk fund. Already this year, we received an additional $2,216 for 2019. That'll come up next year at town meeting. So we've accumulated about $4,500 in the three years. That will give us a little bit extra in the sidewalk fund.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 17, Chief May.
I, I don't know if it's okay, I got to stand in. The chief's had a work in fire. Would it be all right for me to read it? Okay. To move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $63,000 to expend it for a fire department to purchase and equip a Ford F-250, and authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously by the finance committee, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
I can speak, I can speak a little bit to the motion. The vehicle they're replacing is a 2009. You can see it in the photo on the left, Crown Victoria, with 165,000 miles. So that's what they're going to be taking out of service.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 18, Selectman Kinnahan. And I will note, this is a two-thirds vote. Selectman Kinnahan. And I will note, this is a two-thirds vote.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $600,000 to purchase the real estate located at 134 Lincoln Street, consisting of approximately 15 and a half acres, including the entire combined area shown as parcel A, lots one, two, and three, on a plant of land entitled Plan of Land, prepared for Russo Greenhouse Trust, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 62, page 212. Said premises being shown on Town Assessors Map 51, as lots 27, 28, 29, five, and Russo's way.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three zero.
Selectman Kinnahan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. So we're actually, you may have seen, we put together a presentation a couple weeks ago that's been posted online. So we're going to do an abbreviated version of that for you. So about 18 months ago, a group of residents approached the Board of Selectmen to create additional or repair the existing conditions of the athletic fields in town. So we formed a group that's pretty well-rounded, consisting of representative from the Board of Selectmen, myself, representative from the Finance Committee, someone from Boosters, YAA, YFA, the Athletic Director, Conservation Agent, DPW Director, School Committee Member. I believe I covered everyone. So what we did was, we spent the past 18 months doing an analysis on current conditions, needs, and then forming recommendations. So I'm going to ask this group over here, Jeff, Greg, and Jen, to provide us with some of the information on the analysis that was done.
Sure. Thank you, Anthony. My name is Jeff Ryan. I am currently President of the Boosters Association, the Boosters Athletic Group. Here tonight, there's a large presentation, which obviously we're going to skim through. There's a 35-minute presentation that we did online. But really, two words to come out of the presentation, if we can take it all, sorry. If we can take it all and condense it down into two words, it would be space and value. Space, we've run out in some instances. When it comes to athletics in town, we've run out of some space. And value, our town administrators gotten value, and we'll talk about the land a little bit later. But negotiating and getting great value back on the piece of property that this article's related to. So I've lived in town for 17 years. I've been part of youth sports for 15 years. Out of those 17, that's not anything special. There's, I can look around and find a group of us that have been doing this all along. During that time, this town has added a lot of houses, right? A lot of houses. I was reading through some of the comments today about this article, and one of the comments said, the gentleman in 1999 graduated from, not this high school, but this high school, and his class size was around 50 people. This year's graduating class size is going to be around 100, if not a little bit more than 100 people. We've grown tremendously. Our athletic programs have grown, both at the high school and at the YAA, as well as football. But the one thing that has not grown, that has not changed in the 15 years that I've been involved in youth sports, are fields or courts. We've improved a couple of fields, a lot, if you look at the one out here, but we haven't increased the number of fields, as it relates to specifically, as it relates to soccer, football, and basketball. These are sort of the driving forces here. We've, you know, basically, almost probably doubled the size of our youth in 20 years, but we have not increased the size of a field, or not added a field. So with that in mind, to talk more about soccer, football, and basketball, I'm going to turn it over to Greg and Jen. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Like Jeff said, I am the President of the Westbury Daughter Youth Athletic Association. Been on the board for almost nine years now. Starting with soccer, just from, it's in the presentation, but just from 2016 to 2019, there's been a 40% increase in the number of kids playing.
Sorry to interrupt you, but can you just state your name?
I'm sorry, Greg Stupkovich.
Thank you.
So we've had a 40% increase in the number of kids playing sports. It actually went higher in 2020, although, you know, we didn't have seasons due to COVID. During all this time, like Jeff said, we have two soccer fields in town next to the Howard School, which the YAA and the high school share together. In the fall season, the high school uses the fields until about 5:00 PM, and then the YAA gets the fields for the rest of the evening. But the problem we face nowadays with triple E is there's typically a curfew at 6:00 o'clock. So we've got, you know, dozens of teams with nowhere to play. So oftentimes, we have to cancel practices or just not allow practices altogether. And then in the springtime, because of flooding over at the fields, thankfully, the assigner for the league that we use, actually is a resident of Westbury Daughter, we have no home games for the entire month of April, due to the fact that the fields are flooded for that entire month. So at that point, I'm going to hand it over to Jen to talk about some of the field conditions and issues we face there.
Well, good evening. My name is Jen Hamel, and I'm the Athletic Director here at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School. And I certainly look forward. I love being able to talk about our athletic programs, and this is such a great opportunity. I would just reiterate kind of what Greg said, you know, between our high school programs and our youth programs, we have a lot of teams on using our fields. So I think there's, you know, a contributing factor to those challenges is that there's overuse. So we don't have enough, you know, the lack of field space, and then the overuse of the field really makes our fields a challenge. As you can see here from some pictures we have up on the screen, this was from our MIAA Boys Soccer Tournament versus Nantucket. So this was this past fall. And as you can see, the conditions of the field are quite challenging. And, you know, this is kind of, this is obviously the end of the season. So with all of that overuse, the field really gets used quite a bit, which leaves a lot of divots and, you know, bumpy areas. So when we get a lot of water and we get a lot of rain, we can see what happens. There's a ton of puddles. This is, I can't quite see it, I apologize. This is in front of our goal, where, again, you know, before this game started, I really tried to protect our fields, too. I put tarps down, and, but boy, I tell you, by the middle of the game, quite frankly, in the beginning of the game, it was, it was really tough. You can see the puddles in front of the, you know, in front of the goal there. And those, yes, those field uniforms should be white. Nantucket is white there. But unfortunately, like I said, very muddy, very slippery, very challenging conditions, you know. And again, that's our MIAA tournament game that we're playing on that field there.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Sorry, are you?
No, thank you. That was great. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion?
Actually, we do have a little bit more, sorry. Again, you know, Jeff had mentioned, we talked about soccer, basketball, football. So for basketball, again, main issues are the court conditions and the gym time. We've got three gyms in town. The Rozell Gym, which is age-appropriate for the kids attending that school, so second grade to third graders. The Howard School, same thing, you know, the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. The issue we have with the Howard Gym right now is that it's a very small gym. There's no room for spectators. So basically, you're on the court when the kids are playing. And then in addition, when it's rainy or snowy out, you walk onto the court when you step into the gym. So it's continuously slippery. You know, we have incident reports for our organization. Most of them in the wintertime have to do with ER visits, related to kids slipping and falling, because it's just not safe conditions. The surface of the court is not very good as well. And then again, you know, like soccer, basketball is growing in this town. And, you know, we have kids on the boys' side that actually play through high school. So some of the kids that, you know, may not make the varsity team or the junior varsity team, will go back and play town basketball. So we have kids that play all the way through high school. We actually have to send them now to Bridgewater, because they don't have the space here, because the high school already is challenged with space issues, which, again, I want to let Jen talk about.
Sure. Well, thanks again. Talking about, you know, our gym use, we have, between our high school and middle schools, about seven or eight teams, which is awesome, wonderful. And between our youth programs, that's what you want to see. It's so great. And we really try to pack it in. We do a great job. I mean, this gym is used from right after school till, you know, quarter to 10 at night, between both programs. So it's awesome. Our programs are growing, which is really great. But it certainly leaves a challenge, because you're, you know, fitting practices, games, and everything within a certain amount of time, and trying to give everyone, you know, time in the gym. With that, I'm really trying really hard to get our winter track teams and our cheer teams in here as well, as they have, you know, not as much space. You know, we try to get them outside, but there are certain days that's inclement weather, and we find it really tough, and they don't have a place to practice. So, you know, another gym would be awesome, really great. Thank you so much.
And then lastly, on football, I think, you know, those of you that live in town, obviously, everyone lives in town, you know, you see the youth football teams practicing over on that little parcel of land on the side of Spring Street School, as well as there's some pictures there as well, that they actually practice on the town septic system. Again, not ideal. We have one football field that, again, we share with the high school, and it comes down, again, to, you know, just a lack of space.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Could I just finish up quick? I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what we're asking for and what the next steps are. So right now, we're asking for $600,000 for the purchase of the property. We're also going to be asking, in the next article, for $100,000 to do some engineering and design. From there, we'll have to come back to town meeting to ask for the actual funds to construct the property. So we don't know how much that is going to cost yet. We have looked at what other towns have done. It's going to be a multimillion-dollar number, a few million. So you can see, Laura, if you want to just skim through those comp towns, there's, you'll see up here, there's a few towns that have done some fields, and how much they cost. So what we'll do next is put together a cost estimate. We'll come back to town meeting when the time's appropriate. So right now, we'd anticipate, or before the economic downturn, we would have anticipated coming back to town meeting a year from now, with some potential designs, and give options. This could be a phased project. So we don't know if the timing will be right to come back a year from now, or if we'll have to wait due to the economic situation. But now's the time to purchase the property. The property is currently for sale. So we negotiated with the owner to purchase the property for $600,000. If we were to wait, we might lose, we would lose the opportunity for this parcel, and would have to wait for something else to come up. We don't own any other land in town that would work for the complex that we'd be proposing.
Jason, may I say something? So just in the interest of full transparency, although we're asking for $600,000, there is approximately $60,000 in rollback taxes that will be forgiven as part of this negotiation. So just so everyone's aware of that. I know at one point, something like that came out afterwards with the golf course, and people were wondering, why didn't that come out before? Well, it's the way the articles are written. So just so everyone is aware of that, that is part of the price.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Hi, my name is Steve Bochamp. I live at 17 Lincoln Street. I have a question for the town. There's been greenhouses on that property, both sides of the street, almost 40 years. What are you going to do about all the contaminated soil from the pesticides and everything else?
The property's been inspected. John Delano, do you mind speaking to that inspection? John is our Conservation Agent, who performed an inspection of the property.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me through this mask. I was asked to do an inspection on the property. Someone had raised the issue about the pesticides, about oil tanks that were buried out there. And so I contacted the engineer that had done a number of test pits all across the Russo property, for the purposes of perk testing, for the number of house lots that they were proposing in there. And that engineer did not see anything in that digging that alarmed him. And he's a licensed site professional. And so I obtained that information from him, got his copies of his test pits. Then there was a suspicious-looking pile of material at the back of the old greenhouses. And with the assistance of our DPW, we went out with an excavator and dug test pits. And it was all potting soil that was in those mounds. Prior to the greenhouses being demolished, the building inspector contacts the Conservation Office to see if there's any issue with issuing a demolition permit. And so I went out to the site and took photographs of everything that was there prior to the greenhouses being demolished. And they had huge above-ground oil tanks. And so there were no buried tanks there. They were all above-ground oil tanks that were used for the heating. So that was confirmed by chance, because we didn't know this was going to be something coming up. But in our files, we had those pictures of those greenhouses and those above-ground storage tanks. So the question comes up about the pesticides. It's based on my engineering background, that piece of land is going to have to be filled with soil, which would mean that there would be, if there is any contamination in the soil. It is going to be well-protected by a layer of new, clean material on top of it, that will not expose any of the children to any of the harmful possible contaminants in the soil.
Any more discussion?
McCruger, 259 Spring Street, West Bridgewater. I'm familiar with the property, because with the water department, I read the meters in there four times a year. And every time I went there, there were always signs on the buildings that you had to be careful entering because of the pesticides. You had to have a special mask. And as far as I know, that's been greenhouses continuously since before 1940. So we're pretty close to 80-plus years that continuously pesticides have been put down in those greenhouses. And those greenhouses had just gravel floors. So whatever they were spraying continuously for the last 80 years, didn't really go anywhere, because I understand that the property didn't perk. So if it didn't perk, that tells you it didn't leach away. It's probably locked up in the clay that's there. So I'm just giving you a fair warning. I do some testing before I put my kids out there playing on that soil. I'm sure I'm not against the fields, I'm not against the kids, I'm not against soccer, football, or anything else. But we have a lot of other farmland in this town. If you need a soccer field or a football field, that's a lot healthier than that particular piece of property.
Could I rebut?
Yes.
So I'll reiterate that if you stand at Lincoln Street, and you view the property, it slopes very quickly from Lincoln Street to the rear. And we're not proposing to draw water out of that ground if there were any pesticides that were locked up in the clay in that soil. So we're not proposing to draw water out of there to irrigate the fields. And if we did, they would be probably deep artesian wells, which would not be contaminated. So the point, again, I'll reemphasize, that site will require a fill layer above what you see there now. So children will not be exposed to contaminated soil, because there'll be a protective layer of new soil put on there, because it's so, it's got to be level. It's got to be a level playing field. So you can, just common sense tells you that with the slope that it has there now, it has to have some fill to provide that flatness that's needed for the playing fields.
Yeah, Neil Connolly, 376 Walnut Street. I'm going to support this anyways, because we can always have the land. But when you say you have to fill, there's some places, and I just want to ask Dave Gagnon, he said he was the one that requested there was a mound on the property, have it torn down. mound on the property, have it torn down, look underneath and make sure there was nothing there. But I think it was his wall that he lost his looking for. But, what I'm saying, on this, when you say you're just covering the property, you just don't throw dirt on it. You've got to cover it with something else more than for asbestos, like you said. Just because they were building houses. There's a lot of scam artists out there that can get their, their properties perk to be, put these projects up. So, they get the housing up. But when you go into something with the field, you can have young kids, and it's not just for the young kids, it's for us too, if we want to get out there and run around and have a heart attack. But I'm just saying, this property, when you start going forward, like Anthony said, he answered a lot of questions, that gentleman over there answered a lot of questions. It might be a year, it might be two years, it might be three years to get the funding. They just shown one flat, they shown a view of just the field. Then I hear you're going to put a building up on there. It might be 3 million today, 5 million tomorrow, or it might be vice versa. But before we really look into it, which I know you've done your homework on it, but make sure that soil, soil is safe. Because you don't just say, I'm going to throw three inches of loom on and put grass on it, artificial turf. Because I remember over in Holbrook, the hazmat set over there covering up the properties, Reagan started some fund for cleaning up these hazmats, costs millions of dollars to do. And we don't like, we just talked about the insurance in this town. The town don't want to get sued either. That's all. But I am going to support the project. And they did do a good job putting this committee together and finding this piece of property. But he did owe $50,000 in tax. Was it, just for a piece of information from the selectman, was that worth interest also? Or is that just he owed $50,000? Because we took a sign up on Walnut Street, the guy owed $100,000.
It was actually approximately 60,000 and I believe that is the entire amount, David, of the rollback tax.
And how far behind was he? A year, two years?
It's not that he was behind, it's coming out of chapter land. So, when it comes out of chapter land and it's being sold, they have to pay the rollback taxes.
All right. Thank you.
Peter Turner, 394 Forest Street. I watched the presentation, it was a good presentation we'll put together, thank you. Had three questions that came out of it though, if I may ask the three questions, then I'll sit down for them to be answered by the experts. The first one was that it was stated that part of the reason that the present football field cannot be used for soccer is because a ball will get kicked out in the road and that could be a problem. So, in the proposed use, there's a soccer field right next to the road. So, a ball is going to get kicked out in the road. Question will be, what's going to make that different? The second question is, alas, we do not live in West Bridge Desert. We live in West Bridgewater. The field that was built between the post office and the school, when it was built, it was built with good drainage so there wouldn't be the puddles that unfortunately we see. What is being done for the fields that are being designed for this, that's also in a wet, in a very wet area that wouldn't perk, that will prevent that from happening? And the third question is, does this project also include addressing streetlights at the end of Lincoln Street and Crescent Street so that people can get to this beautiful stadium or complex that we're building? Thank you.
So, to answer the first two questions about the design, so, what you see up here is just a possible design. We don't know what the exact design will look like. This is just an idea that meets the needs that we currently face. So, in this design up here, you'll see there's one turf field in the back, the lighter green, and then another multi-use turf field that would also incorporate a baseball diamond in it. And there's two indoor basketball courts, parking, and there's room for outdoor basketball or tennis or pickleball courts. But this is just a tentative, possible design. So, we don't know if that field will actually be on the street or parking could be somewhere else. The fields could be in different locations. And the engineers will address those concerns when it comes time to actually put pen to paper and, and start the design. So, I believe the first question was about the proximity to the road. So, we don't know if that will actually be the location. And the same thing for your second question. And as far as the lights go, that never came up. We never discussed adding streetlights to, to Lincoln Street or to that intersection of the road. Definitely something to consider when we move forward. But, to be honest, it just never came up.
Hi, Patricia McAdal, 158 Scotland Street. I've spoken in front of the town before. Behind my house, there will be a 40B being built. And I can assure you guys that the conservation committee will work very hard to make sure that that land is pesticide-free because they have so far made my land behind my house with perk testing manageable. But my biggest question is, and it's because I'm all for what you guys are projecting right now for our town, is that if this land, because it is so cheap and it, and you guys vote against it, will a 40B be allowed to be built in that land?
It's always possible, but right now, there's design work for eight traditional homes. A 40B could potentially go in. It's never been proposed by the current owner. We've never heard of, heard any rumors of it being 40B because they did do design work for traditional homes. It's possible, but we just don't know if, if that would be the intention of the owner.
Just to add to that, the land wasn't being looked at to prevent a 40B. It was looked at because of the value, the location. And even with COVID-19, it probably couldn't be a worse time to be looking at a sports complex. But the fact is, if we don't buy it, the land will eventually be sold. And it is a good value.
Maurice McCarthy, 23 Captain Carlson Way. The thing I like to keep in mind with this project is a couple of things. Number one, the available land in this town for something for this type of use is disappearing very quickly. Secondly, the price for this land is incredibly cheap. And I like to keep in mind too, similar to the golf course, if the town, God forbid, got into a huge financial bind, we could always sell that land. And the profit would probably be enormous compared to what we would pay for it now. Same with that, this property here and the golf course, hopefully we never have to do that. But we would probably realize a substantial profit in it. So, thanks.
Denise Harvey-Venskas, 18 Cornerstone Lane. And not to rain on everybody's parade, but what's, where's the feasibility of improving the soccer fields that we have? They put a septic system at the Howard School, which made the other half of the field, which is the pictures that we've seen, like nonusable. But what about filling that in and making that, and, and increasing the drainage that we have there? What about putting or renovating the Howard School Gym or the Rozelle, not the Rozelle, yeah, the Rozelle School Gym? That way, all of our kids can access it. There's a few things that I see wrong with this. One, it's at the very corner of our town. We have no sidewalks. The accessibility for people to walk there is so minimal. And we're, so we're looking at, you know, and I know that we could say we can generate income from this. However, east, east, west, I think it's Bridgewater just built theirs and they're renting theirs. And so then, who, we're going to be competing against other towns to rent and make income on this. So, we build this big potential sports complex for a third of the children that go to these schools, not all of them. And then, the accessibility for other people, it's just, it's, I don't see it as being there. And if it's so much wetlands back there, where are we going to put a track for the, for the long, you know, the long-distance runners? Because track and field is huge. But, we have, you know, right out here, why can't we put a soccer field here where there is a batting cages? When, you know, we have fields that are set up for the Y, the YAA maintains for baseball. And we all, and so, I'm not understanding why we're not using some of what we already have. I understand that it's a very, very good price for the, the piece of land. And we think it's a good price, but we're not really sure. Because how much is it going to cost for us to be able to use it if we have to look at putting materials down and de, and decontaminating things, sidewalks, which are $150 a foot? I mean, who's it, who's it accessible to? How are the younger kids going to get there? And parents, well, our high school kids are not going to be able to just walk over there after school for a game. They're going to have to be driven there. And then, how's that going to happen? Are they going to drive themselves? Are we going to provide a bus? I'm, there's, I know there's a lot of positives here, but we, the whole picture to me just doesn't seem good when you look at the whole thing. And I know that we have another piece of land that is located in the, in a very similar area. And I have spoken to John Delano about it and he said that it's not feasible. But the only thing that we have, we don't, we haven't had a wetland survey. We, John Delano said it, based on the plants that are growing there, that, that's how he's determining we can build there. I know I bought a property in Framingham. I had to have the conservation come out and everything. Everything's completely different. The plants had nothing, it was, it just wasn't right. And so, you know, there's so much unknown. I feel like, and it's, I don't feel like it's usable by half of the, half of the community. You know, and 100 kids is not a lot in a graduating class. I mean, it's 100 kids. And if 38, you know, 38 kids out of 100 play a sport and we have some of the stuff available, why do we need a whole entire thing? Do we need another football field? I mean, can't we put a soccer field next to the Spring Street School?
Thank you.
Jan Fox, 311 East Street. So, I just want you to know that the, the committee that looked at this spent over a year doing this. And we looked at all the available resources that we have. And to, to remediate some of the fields that we have would be extremely expensive, number one, and not necessarily practical because a lot of them aren't even regulation size. To try to take the school where the gym is now and, and rip, rip that down and redo that would not be cheap either. This is really for all the children in school and all the adults as well because it's, it's not precluding anybody from being there. There's no available land that the town owns or even doesn't own around the schools that's viable or for sale right now. The, the expectation would be that, you know, everybody in town can use this. The space in the back, where it's kind of the wider space, that's not buildable. It's considered wet as it's not buildable, but it's definitely okay to do, to walk, for walking trails and things like that. So, we looked at all of that stuff. And we looked at the, the current situation with the fields that we have, all the challenges that we have. We have the experts that are on, you know, with these kids playing that spoke earlier, that understand all the challenges with these fields and things that we have in place right now. And so, to remediate the fields that we have now is, we already looked at that. And it just doesn't seem feasible.
So, so then, if you looked at it, maybe just give me an example of how much you think it would cost to put a field next to the Spring Street School, a soccer field? I mean, these are the things. You're talking about expensive? I don't see any, the only thing more expensive in this town is this school than what you're going to put up here. And so, I don't-
So, when you look at the price of this land, it's very inexpensive. I, I did a little bit of research and there are 2,012 parcels of residential land in this town and 288 commercial land. So, it's, it's about, you know, for taxable parcels. And it's, if you divide the $600,000, it's $251. This land is very reasonably priced. We don't know yet how much it's going to cost to build on it. But from my perspective as a finance person, we're taking cash of $600,000 and we're trading it for another asset, which is land. And if it turns out that we can't, you know, do what we like to with it for any number of reasons, we can always sell the land. So, for me, it's a, really a no lose. I mean, we might spend $100,000 on the engineering costs, which, you know, I guess you could call throwaway if we don't end up doing what we want to do. But that's a pretty small price to pay to give our town. You know, I, I don't have little kids anymore. My son's well-grown. But I, I just, I'm in support of being able to give these kids the facilities that they need to keep them active, in shape, off the streets, occupied, away from drugs. It's, there's just so many benefits to playing sports. And this is for kids who maybe don't qualify to be in the schools. You know, they, they have to try out and stuff at the school. The kids that participate in these, they can just, everybody can play.
They can, anybody can play town sports. I do believe you don't have to qualify for that. So, it's accessible. What I'm looking at, when you look at the socioeconomics, there are a lot of kids who play town sports, a lot of-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you have any new information to add to the discussion?
I just want people to think about whether or not this is going to be accessible to low-income families, whether or not-
There's a move to, there's a move to vote? There's a second? All those in favor of, of move? Those opposed? I just have it.
That was only to move the vote, I believe.
That is a two-thirds vote. And I also want to announce that-
Excuse me?
That was just to move-
I just want to say that that motion that was made was a motion to call the question. That motion was seconded. It was voted. Now, you have to vote on the article. The article hasn't been voted yet. So, that's where we are now. It's the, the article's been, hasn't been voted. Question's been called. So, there's no further discussion. But now, you have to vote on the article, which requires a two-thirds vote.
Can I talk? Seeing, seeing no more discussion? We're going to move-
Okay, say something?
They moved the question. So, we're on to the vote.
Listen, a mo, a motion to call the question is a priority motion. This moderator did not stop those people from speaking. You did. Somebody made the motion. It was seconded. It passed. The debate is over. We're not trying to stop anybody. That was what was done.
On a point of information, Mr. Chairman, that's crossfire. They have to take the microphone to be recognized. Just for a point of information, when you make a motion, you don't have 20 people yell from the seat. There was a gentleman up here, people. If you want to make a motion to move the question, you go up to the mic, address it with your name, and make the motion to move the question. Then you put it to a vote. But usually in a debate like this, here, how many people are here to speak? One more person? Let's let the one more person speak, then move the, then go to the vote.
I will allow the one more discussion. And then, we're going to move to the vote.
I'm, just being honest, I would, would vote yes for this. But why I came up here was my point, was that when you're talking about 100 kids, that's totally not true. It's, you're talking probably 200 years, 200 kids for at least 20 more years, right? And then, if you're talking a baseball field, I know West Bridgewater doesn't have a baseball field for older kids. Like, my oldest son played baseball in Brockton just so he could keep on playing, right? And by the time this is built, he'll be done with any school, sports, anything. So, why I believe we should vote for this is for the younger kids, who I have nothing to do with at all. And I just want those younger kids to have opportunities that older kids didn't. And- And not to mention, the people that'll be coming from other towns, maybe, maybe to use this. Like, if anyone goes to Hanover and plays basketball, you know, once basketball's over, they go to all the restaurants in that town. Because, you know, they're going to eat. I'm just saying that it's not for 200 kids, it's for at least 200 kids for the next 20-something years, and it makes that town, I think, a more, a beautiful thing. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to the vote on the article. It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes have it, two-thirds vote. Motion passes. I'd also like, would also like to welcome Senator Walter Timmeltie here as well. He's in the audience. Thank you for coming. Now we're going to move on to Article 19. Selectmen Kinahan?
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $100,000 for the design and engineering for an athletic fields complex to be built on Lincoln Street.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended by the Finance Committee, six to zero unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this is the $100,000 that I spoke about, to do some design work and have a proposal done with cost estimation for the design of the property. And then we'll use that design to come back to town meeting when we're seeking the funds for the build-out.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. I'm going to now give the mic briefly to Senator Timmeltie to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members, and thank you all very much. I'll be very brief. First of all, on a personal note, to Billy and Julie Flynn, thank you very much. Their daughter Hannah interned in my office last summer and did a wonderful job. Hannah's now moved on to bigger and better things, working for a congressman. So thank you very much to Hannah. And also, on a personal note, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Anderson on her election to the Board. I look forward to working with you, Ms. Anderson. And to my friend, Mr. Marrera. Thank you very much for your decades of service to West Bridgewater, to Mr. Marrera. I know that Eldon is not retiring, so I look forward to working with Eldon in a variety capacities down the road. But to you, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. I'll be very brief, just to give you a legislative update. Last week, as filed by the governor, we passed a 1/12 budget for the month of July. The fiscal year will commence on July 1. Because of the uncertainty with COVID-19 in our economy, we do not have a consensus revenue number as of right now that we can rely upon. We did back in December, but of course, that number is, for all intents and purposes, gone. So right now, we're simply trying to find a consensus revenue figure to build a budget upon. So upon the governor's filing, Governor Baker, he filed a $5.25 billion supplemental budget for the month of July, temporary, I should say, which is called commonly a 1/12 budget. So that will allow the Commonwealth to pay its bills in what is a bare-bones spending plan while we seek that consensus, stable revenue figure. Currently, we have a rainy day fund or a stabilization fund or reserve bank account of $3.5 billion. The fiscal year, which will end July 1, our deficit currently is $800 million to $900 million. So we will get through FY '20 just fine by taking reserve monies. Next year, next fiscal year, FY '21, which commences on July 1, the current deficit is projected at $6 billion to $8 billion. So we will use some of the reserves for that year, but we cannot use all of the reserves. Our reserve, our stabilization fund, is what our bond rating from Wall Street is built on. Right now, our bond rating is as high as it possibly can be because of the $3.5 billion in our reserve account, the stabilization fund. Now, last week as well, we also passed a Chapter 90 Bond Bill to repair roads and bridges, which will mean $200 million in bond obligations to rebuild roads and bridges around the Commonwealth. And a share of that, of course, is allocated for West Bridgewater. Also, last week, we heard a bill in the Economic Development in Emerging Technologies Committee filed by Governor Baker, an Act Enabling Partnerships for Growth, which is to further stimulate our economy. This Thursday in the Massachusetts State Senate, we will be taking up an IT bond bill to the tune of $1,698,125. That again is a bond bill. It's for IT, for our cities and towns. I have filed an amendment to make sure that West Bridgewater receives its fair share. And also, we will be addressing a supplemental budget, which will again be addressed on Thursday in the Massachusetts State Senate. It will appropriate $1.1 billion for cities and towns and organizations around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the belief that the federal government will reimburse the monies. So right now, we're hoping that the HEROES Act, which was passed by the US House, which will mean $10 billion for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, will be embraced by the US Senate, or some form thereof. If it, if it is embraced by the US Senate, it will mean $10 billion for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's just a little bit of an update. Mr. Moderator, I thank you. I understand that tomorrow is Dr. Oakley's last day. And Dr. Oakley, there you are right there. Congratulations, Doctor. Thank you very much. And congratulations to Mr. Bardwell. And thank you very much to Chief Flaherty for the warm greeting, as always. Mr. Moderator, I thank you. I thank you for the time. I will never forget that I work for the people of West Bridgewater, and thank you again for the privilege. Take care, folks.
Thank you, Senator. We're going to move on to Article Number 20. Ms. Sullivan?
Move that the town vote to transfer $49,035 from Article 27, paving school lots of the annual town meeting of June 12, 2017, and close out said article into the Education Fed Stabilization Account.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, briefly. As you may recall, we established the Fed Stabilization Account last year at town meeting. That account is intended for the unanticipated costs that come up during the year. For example, move-ins and other special costs. We would like to, we're hoping that we can have some future money also from this account, and from things like money that's left over in the general budget, and then also free cash. And I would just like to add that this can only be up to 2% of the total budget, and we would need the school committee vote and the selectman vote in order to move the cash. This $49,035 was from a bid that was underbid for the paving of the Spring Street and the Howard School lots.
Thank you. Any discussion on the article? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously.
I would just like to also say, on behalf of the school committee, a huge thank you and best wishes to Dr. Oakley upon her retirement. 30 years of service, so we thank you.
Article 21, and I will note this is a two-thirds vote. Mr. Parks?
Let's keep it moving. All right. Move that the town vote to borrow a sum of $41,000 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to perch a Ford F-350 utility body pickup truck and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Last year, just after town meeting, a driver fell asleep on Manly Street, took out our van, and injured two of our employees. They're both back working now, yes. The van is being replaced by an extended cab F-350 with an enclosed utility body on it. We've suffered for a long time without this vehicle. We're also going to utilize $17,194.36 from the insurance from the van.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 22, Mr. Parks?
Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $15,000 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to refit the existing motor starter with the variable frequency drive and surge protection system at Norman Ave Station.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
We have a 50 horsepower pump in that station. When it starts, it's an on-demand start, it's hanging 50 feet down in the well. When it runs, it twists and torques. It's broken its bindings a few times now, and I've had it repaired, but it comes on full power. So refitting with the variable frequency drive will allow it to start at 0 gallons instead of 500 gallons a minute and ramp up to speed over time. So that saves us money on energy and parts. We'll also be able to remove our parko valve system, which is how we currently control the full on-demand start, and that'll save us on money on parts and maintenance costs.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 23, Mr. Parks?
That the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $100,000 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to pay down principal on the tank painting loan.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to recommend unanimously, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Simply put, we're just paying down some of our debt, which will help our budget in the long run.
Mr. Moderator, Neil Carley, 376 Walnut Street. How much is in the water surplus?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. We're about to spend some of it. I want to say somewhere around $600,000.
Is that before the spending, or it'll be done after the spending?
Probably before the spending.
Where's that kept? In your pocket or in the bank?
It's that free cash that nobody likes to talk about.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 24, Mr. Parks?
It's on the next page. Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $77,000 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to receive an asset management grant.
Article 24.
Yep, all right, let's try this one. Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $50,668 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to pay down the principal on new well loan.
Can you just repeat the total? Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is, once again, this is a project that's actually in fruition right now, and we're paying off the debt as it's happening.
Neil Carley, 37, how much is the, how much is the debt that we owe?
On that, I believe we borrowed somewhere under $600,000.
So you're going to put that towards it?
Yes.
And if we don't put money towards it, when's the payoff on the loan?
That's a, I believe that's a short-term one.
This is in the bands, which is the short-term borrowing, so it has to be paid off within 10 years. And it was $500,000 was the amount approved last year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 25.
All right. That the town move, move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $77,000 to be expended by the Water Commission is to receive an asset management grant.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Certainly. DEP is requiring us to do a lot of studies, programs, surveys, audits, et cetera. For this grant, we must fund it in full upfront, and then we will be reimbursed for a percentage of this required program. I've applied for this grant now for a couple of years, and this year, well, last year, we finally got it. We can receive up to 60%, 60% back of the total cost, but that won't be determined until we get near the end of the program. I currently have two other required projects for DEP, but Kerry and I, we're going to do those in a house.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 26, Mr. Parks?
Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $11,108 to be expended by the Water Commission is to replace the existing radio transmitter system.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. During, early in the year, like January, February, we had a lightning storm pass through, and I'm pretty sure it struck the North Elm Street tank, and it fried almost all of my equipment in it. Part of it was the radio transmitter. We have four of them that talk back and forth to each other. It's not radios, hand radios like CBs. The data transmitter, so we can communicate with the various equipment around town that we can't reach with fiber optics. In fixing this, we found out that the radio transmitters were no longer available. I was able to procure a used one and get it in place, and we've been lucky that nothing else has happened along the way.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 27, Selectmen Reyes.
That the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, and upon such terms and condition as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, a permanent easement for sidewalk and sidewalk construction purposes containing approximately 35 square feet, said easement adjoining the southeasterly location line of West Center Street and the westerly location line of Howard Street, and being shown as parcel SW-1 on a plan of land entitled Plan of Easement to be acquired by the Town of West Bridgewater, 155 Howard Street, prepared for the Town of West Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, dated August 27, 2019, prepared by Greenman Peterson, Incorporated, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and to take all actions necessary or appropriate to carry out said acquisition and construction or act thereon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee, six to zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
There's not very much to say about it. It's a small parcel of land, it's coming to the town free, there's no risk involved in this.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article twenty-eight, Ms. Fox.
Move that the town vote to amend Article twelve, Finance Committee of the Town's general bylaws as printed on the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously by the finance committee, six to zero.
Board of selectmen?
Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, so we just needed to change the, um, Article twelve to clear up some gaps in the, in the current wording and to reduce the size of the committee from nine to seven members. Um, and to clarify when those members would be appointed and, and how those terms would run. Hi, uh, I just have a quick question. In the book, it says that you've referred to voters, you've referred unanimously for the voters to, um, or is it that you actually recommended the article? So in my book, it says recommend. Okay. All right. My note, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Oh, did you hear what I said?
Can you just repeat that?
Oh, so she was asking about whether we recommended it or referred it to the voters, but in the book that I have it, we recommended it, and I'm pretty sure we voted on it, and we did recommend to make this change as a finance committee.
Neil Connolly, three seven six Walnut Street. If anybody could give you a history on this, it's probably Warren Turner. But why are we going down from nine to seven? And then it says you'll, uh, I'm just curious, that's all. Why you, uh, and it says, uh, the finance committee shall choose its own offices, adopt such rules regarding its procedures made from time to time to be necessary. And you cross out the appointed members of the finance committee shall constit, constitute its executive board. The executive board shall examine all articles in the warrant at the town meeting. The executive board shall keep the selectmen informed as, as of all its actions. Also, I'm just gonna, that's a question, I just wanna, may wanna respond.
So we're, we're going down from nine to seven because we sometimes have, well, we sometimes have issues getting a quorum because, you know, with more members, you need more people present, and we have trouble getting members on the board to begin with. And then if, you know, sometimes if one person's sick, we can't, you know, we can't really conduct business. So that's why we were, we were trying to go down to seven.
I get that, that makes sense. And, uh, lastly, the finance committee shall choose its own offices. What's that mean? Its own executive board?
Oh, no, just like a chair, a vice chair, and a, and a clerk.
And that's it, they won't proceed?
No, most of the boards do that, I think.
So if somebody wants to get on that board, they still gotta go through the procedure, through the selectmen, however it's done?
Yes, correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Turner. Um, could, uh, town council be asked, please, is section three worded correctly? Because I'm reading it, and it says, what, the way it's worded is that every year, one of the, some for three and some for two and some for one. Not that initially, the word initially's been struck from it. And so I think that's not worded correctly anymore. Could town council comment on that, sir?
I think the word, the wording is a little confusing, but I think the intent is pretty clear. So I think if I were to read this, I would say staggered terms. So that's the key word. The staggered terms for three years, two years, and one year, and two for one year. So once they're appointed, it'd be three-year terms, staggered. Would I like to see the word? Initially, yes, but it's not there, but I don't think that's critical.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article twenty-nine. Mr. Hurley.
Hugh Hurley, Chairman of the Planning Board. Mr. Moderator, the planning board is not going to be moving Article twenty-nine, and we'd ask to pass without action.
Sounds good. Article thirty. This is a two-thirds vote. Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by amending section eight point six ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations as printed on the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Uh, finance committee voted unanimously to refer this to the voters.
Board of selectmen? Can you repeat that?
Recommended, is it on? Recommended unanimously by the board of selectmen, three to zero.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Moderator, the planning board held a public hearing as required by law uh, before, uh, and recommended that this, uh, bylaw be passed by four to zero. What this is doing is, it's allowing the, uh, a farm, a piece of land uh, in use as for agriculture of at least fifteen acres to be able to put solar, uh, panels on, on the property. They're allowed in the business zone, they're allowed in the, uh, uh, industrial zone, they're allowed in the residential zone to a lesser extent. Now, this is a, actually was written by an attorney from the, uh, state Farm Bureau, and apparently they're doing this in a lot of places, a lot of towns. There is legislation out there and that you have to, uh, qualify for. This just allows them to put it on the land. Then the state regulations come in as to what you can do, uh, the height they have to be, uh, they, they have to be high enough so that animals can pass underneath them. Most of your, your solar panels are only about this high off the ground and, and planting up. These are gonna be high enough so that an animal can grow, uh, walk underneath it. Also high enough so that the sun will get in there, so you do not have a, a shaded dead spot. It's a whole procedure that, that they have to do. All this is doing is just allowing somebody with a, a fifteen-acre farm to be able to, uh, qualify to go to the state, and then they have to pass the state regulations.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Neil Connolly, three seven six Walnut Street. The solar panels, I heard a little about this article. And, uh, what it is, I'm not here to suppo, say, shoot it down or whatever. But when we bought, uh, Anderson's farm, and I forget how we bought it, for the, uh, so you don't have to pay taxes on it. Will they be able to put solar panels on those farms, or will that exempt them?
No, they, uh, that's the agricultural prevention, uh, preservation. That, they do not qualify. This is only for somebody that does not have their land under the sixty-one A. No, that, no, excuse me, not the sixty-one A, but under the agricultural, uh, preservation, where they were paid for their development rights already. So they, they cannot qualify this as it stands now, and this does not allow them to either.
They just hope to see, because we're an open space town, that's all.
Delcoy, Copeland Street. Um, what this does, this just allows you a special permit process. It doesn't mean you'll still be able to do it. There's some areas that people may not want it, you may not be able to do it. Um, but this allows the farm to get, generate some income and still use the land for agriculture underneath the elevated panels. I mean, solar, I don't think people realize, but i- it's becoming a very, very popular thing. This is endorsed by the Farm Bureau, it's endorsed by the, the both Department of Agriculture, state and federal level. And I think that there's a lot of revenue that comes to the town as well through personal property tax that people don't realize, and there's no expenditure to the town. It doesn't hurt your school system, your roads, your police, your fire, nothing. Several hundred thousand over a twenty-year contract would come to the town on, on a project, depending on its size. Something to really think about.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, if I may. Um, I was, my name's Meredith Anderson. I'm speaking as a resident. I live at one eighteen South Elm Street. I was a member of the bylaw study committee, and one of the things we were told is that this is only going to work on one parcel of land in town. We were told that there was no other farm in town that this would be eligible for. Now, I've, I've talked to a few people since that meeting, and I've heard different answers. So I was wondering if there was someone who could clarify what land in town this is allowed on. There are also restrictions written into this bylaw that if your land is not already set up a specific way, you have no option of doing this. So if there are other farms that are in smaller parcels, they are not going to be given the option to combine them in order to take advantage of this. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear on who is going to be allowed to do this and who isn't.
Denise Rais. I'm not sure if there are other farms out there that might wanna consider converting some of their land or utilizing it as well for a solar field. But it's true. A resident with a farm came forward and said, listen, I want to stay in West Bridgewater. I want to keep my land. I'd like to invest in solar fields and, and put solar energy on my property. Um, it would be nice if other farms would stay here too. And quite frankly, if they came forward with a bylaw next year and wanted to amend this so that they could keep their land and add solar panels onto it, I wouldn't be opposed to that either. But a resident did come forward, and I am strongly in favor of this bylaw.
Mr. Moderator. John Cruz, one twenty-three North Elm. Let's look at the big picture. If it helps one farm, great. If it helps many farms, even better. It sounds like there's a particular member here that's got a bias against one particular farm. But let's look what's going on around the country, around the state. It's green energy. The land is still taxed. The solar fields are taxed, the equipment, personal property. There's a wave in the town, in the, in the state, obviously in the country, for more green energy. That's what this does. Look what it's doing to the environment. We've got issues with fossil fuels and what's going on. There's, there's one community in the state that's prohibiting fossil fuels, right? Is that what we want? There's, some people don't want more fossil fuels, some people don't want more green energy. I prefer green energy. And the other thing that this will do, it'll lock up the land in terms of open space. Instead of having the potential of, of this, or a particular site to have forty B, which we're lacking under, by the way, this will increase open space with solar fields on it as opposed to building. I think it's a win-win situation, and I ask that everybody vote when they vote for this. They vote in favor of green energy for an open environment. Thank you.
Paula Bunker, one twenty-three North Elm Street. In regards to this only being able to be utilized by one farm is incorrect. There are other properties that are in sixty-one A that are much larger than fifteen acres. Demolis, Kaminsky, and I'm drawing the blank on another one. But there are other farms that can utilize it. We do have a number of properties in sixty-one A currently. It just has to be a minimum of fifteen acres. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote, and just to remind us of the two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Article thirty-one. Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. I would like to, uh, uh, discuss both Article thirty-one and thirty-two together. They both pertain to, uh, digital signboards, digital signs. But because they're two different sections in the, uh, present zoning bylaw, we have to act on them as two separate things. I'd like to discuss them together, and then I believe we have to vote on them separately afterwards. But I would like to be able to move, if I may.
I'll allow it, and I just wanna make note that both of these are two-thirds votes.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by amending section four point four table of use regulations by adding the following under commercial and industrial uses as printed on the warrant. And I'd like to also move, at the same time, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws as amending section six point five sign requirements as printed on the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee voted unanimously to refer both of these to the voters.
Board of selectmen? Would you like to speak to the motions?
Yes, sir. The planning board held a public hearing on both of these, uh, amendments, and by a vote of four to zero in favor of, uh, passing them. Okay, what we, we have here is, we're talking about is digital messaging boards. Uh, there's several of them around town. The school has one, the liquor store in the center of town has one. Mr. Bridges down on Bridges, uh, what is it, insect control or something down on South Elm Street. Uh, even our, uh, transfer station has one. And, uh, what this will do is it will, uh, uh, address both the, the speed that the, they're changing so that they're not changing, uh, very quickly. It will also, uh, so that they're not flashing. And we also address the intensity, the lumens, that some of them are very bright, especially where, as you get closer to them. And the, uh, and also the size of them. The, um, the, uh, time change, which is, is one of the main things, is gonna be once every thirty minutes. So every thirty minutes, it can, uh, it can change. And, uh, because the, it's not gonna be the flashing, the kind of thing that, uh, all of a sudden, it's a bright light flashing as you, as you drive along the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the two articles?
Neil Connolly, three seven six Walnut Street. Uh, now, these, are these just for business zones, these types of signs, or can they start putting them up? I just say I'd wanna pull one up in front of my yard. Could I do that?
They're, in the, uh, in the table, they are, uh, they're allowed in all zones as a special permit. So if you can convince the, uh, and the special permit authority is the, uh, Board of Appeals. If you can convince them that you need them, but it's further things in here about a business, and it has to be, you can't put a sign up for another business someplace else in, in your front yard. But if you can convince them under the special permit, uh, for some reason, I don't know what reason you wanna put it up there, but if you can convince them, perhaps you could.
So, uh, when you start, this is a new technology, the signs, the way they're going, and, uh, usually we just painted signs, like Clear Channel has a few signs out there, the billboards. And I'm just saying, you start putting them up, like, do they have to be shut off by a certain time? Somebody might be butted up against it, like, just say they're up by the charley horse. People had complaints about when they were gonna move there. Now they wanna start advertising. I know one oh six is business zone, then residential and commercial, but what happens if they just start getting closer and closer to residential? That's something just to think about. I mean, you say, right now, you might not have the problem. I'm not saying you're gonna change the bylaw now, but I'm just saying, down the road, it's just something to think about. Because everything's starting to get more and more technology, and that's part of technology.
That's one of the beauties of the special permit process. It has to, you have to have a public hearing, so the, and any of the neighbors are, are notified by certified mail. They get a chance to speak at the public hearing, and they have to demonstrate that it's, uh, appropriate and not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna move to a vote first. Article thirty-one. A reminder, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Now, Article thirty-two, also a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Seeing all articles have been acted upon, and no other business coming before this meeting, I declare the twenty-twenty annual town meeting adjourned. I love these things.